To the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, for our nation, under God, in the good soul, in the liberty of this land.
A thought, Eric. Heavenly Father, we bow before you this evening and we thank you for your goodness, your mercy, your grace, your love toward us through your son, Jesus Christ. We thank you tonight for the group of leaders in this room and we pray for the spirit of wisdom to be given to them as they make decisions on behalf of this community to bring prosperity and blessing. Lord, we pray for your favor in economics, that you will just continue to bless this village with new businesses. We pray that you'll go before them and may those connections be made. We pray for the people of Walton, that you just watch over them. And so we commit this meeting tonight to you, asking for your favor. In your name we pray. Amen?
Thank you, sir.
Okay, get in there, everyone. The first thing that we're going to do today is to have a public hearing on the tax law. Do the motions open up? Second. All favor. Basically, I'm sorry, I just put my hip on the bottom. What this is about is that with this, we override the tax limit, meaning if we have to go above the tax limit, which is 1.1%, I believe, right, John?
1.02%.
Yeah, 1.02%. When we're doing our budget, it gives it, by the state law, gives us the authorization to do it. We're trying not to. I think that we're not going to be able to have to, but just in case, we do that. So that's what this is all about. If no one has anything else to say about it.
Speaking of the budget?
Yes, sir.
About Maple Street, are you going to be turning that up to put the water line and sewer line?
No, we're not going to do that. That's not going to be one of the things we're going to do. I want to do it a better way that if we did Maple Street, yes, it would help to have the water going down, but still, a lot of the water would still flow down into Cherry Street. So I don't think that would be a better way to do it. We just want to do the most economical and way to save the houses. Anyone else? Yes?
Mary Frainer, 40 Union Street. Just had a quick question. Was this advertised as the meeting for the budget hearing and for the noise ordinance?
This is not a budget hearing.
Well, not, sorry, not the budget hearing.
We said last month that we'd have two public hearings.
Right. Did you also advertise that? Because I wasn't seeing where it was advertised.
There was only the newspaper.
It was legal news.
Last week, this week? And then it wasn't put on the website till today? And again, the website is never kept up to date. Drives me nuts, just wanted to say that.
It was probably in the newspaper the week after the board meeting.
Okay, all right. Anybody else have anything else to say? If not, we need a motion to close.
Is this both the hearing and the tax?
This is, yeah.
Oh, okay.
This is, everything is, this is, yeah.
Yep, second to most.
All favor. All right, okay. So now we need to vote to make sure that that's, that'll do.
Make the motion to pass the tax cap override, which is a budgetary tool that we've used ever since I've been here.
Yeah. Is there a second on that? One favor? Okay, the next public hearing, which we need to open up again, is about the noise, the noise local law. Need a motion to open that up as well.
Motion to open the public hearing on the noise ordinance. Second?
All favor? All right, vote. Carry. This, we talked about also a few times about noise, noise ordinance. We've, people have been trying to have one in the village for many, many years. This will, this copies, I have copies on the table here, right?
Yeah.
Put some copies there. To help where the police, if somebody makes a complaint of the large noise, the hours that we're talking about from 10:00 at night to 6:00 in the morning. And if there's a complaint with a large noise or something going on, the police will have the authorities that go down there to give them a warning to stop. If they don't, then there's a fine that can be involved in it. I have the, the whole thing here, which anybody can ask for a copy of, I can give it to you. I can, I can read part of it, take two minutes if you don't mind, I'll read the thing to you. Local law, two men, chapter 176 of the code of the village of Walton entitled Peace and Good Order by adding new article for excessive noise to be enacted by the village board of the village of Walton, Delaware County, New York, section one, title. This local law shall be known as local law to amend chapter 176 of the code of the village of Walton to add excessive noise. Purpose and intent, the purpose of this local law is to amend chapter 176 of the code of the village of Walton entitled Peace and Good Order to regulate and prohibit excessive noise within the village of Walton, preserving public peace, health, and safety by exhibiting unreasonable, loud, unnecessary, and unusual noise that disturb the peace and quiet of the community or cause discomfort or annoyance to resemble persons of normal sensitivity, authority. This local law is enacted pursuant to the authority granted by article two of the municipal home rule of law of the state of New York. Section four amendment, that's chapter, chapter 176 of the code of the village of Walton entitled Peace and Good Order is hereby amended by adding a new article by excessive noise to read as follows. Excessive noise, certain noise, but rarely. It shall be unlawful for any person to unreasonably make, continue, or cause to make or contain any loud, unnecessary, unusual noise that disturbs the peace and quiet and comfort of any neighbor and causes discomfort or annoyance to any reasonable person of normal sensitivity residing in the area. For the purpose of this section, any police officer in the village of Walton, Delaware County Sheriff's Office, or New York State Police shall be considered a reasonable person of normal sensitivity regardless of whether, where, or where the officer resides in the area. It shall be presumed that the owner, tenant, persons, or possession of the control or occupants of the premise on which the noise are jointly restricted or committed such noise. No person shall, person, entity, or parent or access shall engage in construction, excavation, demolition, repair, altercation, or any similar activities in a residential or hospital zone within 500 feet of such zone between the hours of 10:00 p.m. and 6:00 a.m., except in a case of emergencies determined by the village code officer or authorized official. For purpose of this provision, construction includes the operation of any equipment, machinery, or tools that produce sound capable of being heard beyond the property line of the premise on which the work is being conducted. Penalties, the first violation of this article shall be punishable by a fine of not more, not exceeding $250. The second violation within 12 months of the first conviction shall be punished by a fine not exceeding 500 servability. In any cause, sentence, paragraph, section, part of this article shall be adjudged by any court of competent jurisdiction to be invalid. Such judgment shall not affect, impair, or invalidate the remainder thereof, shall be confined to its operation, cause, sentence, paragraph, section, or therefore directly involved in the controversy in which such judgment shall be resumed. This article shall take, shall take effect immediately upon filing with the Secretary of State. In any cause, sentence, paragraph, section, or part of this local law shall be adjudged by any court or competent jurisdiction be invalid. Such judgment shall not affect, impair, or invalidate the remainder thereof, or shall be confined to its operation, cause, sentence, paragraph, section. This local law shall take effect immediately upon filing with the Secretary of State, excuse me, in the state of New York. So that's four. It's, yes.
I just have a quick question. Does that also include tractor trailers going in late at night?
Thing that if it's making an excessive loud noise, yes. Okay.
Question on enforcement. Say something's going on for five or 10 minutes that's rather loud. I mean, it all takes 30 minutes for an officer to come, it's no longer happening. How is that enforced? How is any loud noise that's not in occurrence when the law enforcement is there going to be addressed?
Well, I have to speak to the chief. I would think, I mean, I'm only, that the officer would go to the location and said that he had a complaint, that there was noise. He didn't hear it, but saying that if he had to go back again, then it would be an issue that would have to be taken care of. Unless he hears it himself, right, chief, do you know what I mean? So, but you would go to the location, correct? Yes, sir.
How are you going to enforce that right now with the lack of police officers you have aboard? Are you going to go out and do it?
No, I'm not. It's got to be the police, got to be the sheriff, got to be the...
Can't be the state police because that's out of their jurisdiction. They enforce local law like that. So it'd have to be probably one of our officers or something like that, but if you're going to fill a box through and then put more constraints on our police department, how are you going to enforce something like that? I mean, you've got complaints coming up, but, you know, especially in the summertime with fireworks and different things like that happening after 5:00 at night. The other thing, the other question I have too is, what's the definition of normal?
Well, that would be up to the...
No, I mean, in your statement, you said a normal person's hearing. What is the definition of that? What's a normal person's hearing as far as that's concerned? Is there like a descript reading to that?
No, we don't have a descript reading. We, if, this law is exactly the same type of law that's in Oniata. And we talked to our attorney, and the attorney in Oniata said they've had this law. It's been challenged one time in the appellate division and it was won. And he said they haven't had no issues since then, so that's...
I don't disagree with a lot. No, you're wrong. I'm just wondering about the constraints that we have currently on our own police force. I mean, we have...
Well, we're trying to get, I mean, I know, but we have a lot of people complaining about noises that's been coming up, so at least if we, a lot of times if people know you have a law in place and you give a warning, sometimes that would be enough. So I, I gotta say where you're coming from. We're trying to get two or three more. We need at least two more police officers. We're in the process of doing that too. Okay? Yes?
As you know, I've had many comments and concerns, but I wanted to say that I was really pleased with the way that it was laid out and I like the separating the excessive noise from the, the construction noise. And I feel like it gives, it just provides a tool to the police to be able to do what needed to be done. So, thank you.
I think it's a waste of time with the restriction that we already have on our police force. Like, that is the last, there are so many bigger issues in this village than noise ordinance. How about people breaking into houses and walking on back lawns and...
We addressed that last month too.
I know, I know. Just given my public input.
You can have it, you're right.
Just doesn't think it needs to be done.
Somebody else could talk?
No.
What's your chances of having, I know you're short of police, but what's your chance of having a policeman direct traffic at Bridge Street and Stockton Avenue? That, those cars are piled way back when school gets out?
Yeah, that's, it's kind of tough. Like you said, we are shorthanded on that. I understand what you're talking about. We don't have, we just have the crossing guards. That's the only other thing we have to protect the kids.
Across the garden, can actually move the traffic then?
Well, they're not really... Yeah, well, I can talk about this afterwards. Just, I got a little bit just right now, a little explain, okay? I'm sorry. Anything else about the noise complaint? Yes?
Are there any exceptions for industrial users or businesses in the village?
Is there any exceptions for...
Industrial users or businesses within the village?
Well, the, the normal business that you would have and the noise that comes in would not going to be affected. This is the other than your normal businesses that are affected. We're not going to come down to, say, construction, like house, or making noise, but no, we're not going to do that. This, a lot of this is mainly from people in the presence of having issues with freewheelers and excessive noises at night, that type of thing. Somebody else?
My concern continues to be weaponization of this law. Because if you only need one person to complain, you're putting an absolute burden on the police to decide. And if you have like a duplex or multifamily dwelling and you have one person that doesn't like each other, they could reasonably call the cops every time there's a noise after 10:00 at night.
True.
And it would be an undue burden on probably the sheriff's office to respond to that after midnight.
There's no way I'd be calling the cops, especially snowmobiles. They go up by at 11:00 at night time. I'm not saying nothing.
Okay.
Because, you know, it is what it is. We don't get much snow and when we do, they have, you know, they want to ride them.
Anybody else? The motion to close?
Chief, do you, would you have an opinion on this?
Which part? Just the noise ordinance in particular?
Is there situations where it would help you?
Yes. And some of those, it would be case by case basis. I agree with you saying that it could be weaponized, but I think it will be case by case. It'll be up to, it'll be the officer's discretion to decide, you know, whether or not it's going to be, if they're using it as a weapon and kind of squash it there, but it's, it's hard to say. We can't, we can't cover every scenario.
Agreed. Discussions that we've had about it, basically this is something that, that will be valuable or amendable, excuse me, if the present language doesn't fit as, as neatly as it should. So that's something that a law can change and can be augmented. Would you agree the police department needs a tool to address these types of complaints that we've been receiving?
Yes, and there'll be a period of time where, you know, documenting, you know, cases as they come in, kind of real evaluate and see if we need to maybe tweak, you know, certain aspects of the law and kind of go from there. But it's not going to be one size fits all, it's not going to be a cure-all, but it'll be a trial and error to see what works and what doesn't.
We've been talking about this for a long time. We're not trying to give burden to police with more, but a lot of times the chief has told me, he's got a lot of complaints he goes to and you can't do anything because there's no law on the books. At least if there's something on the books, you can at least give a warning. You don't have to go and find them all the time, but if they know there's a law on the books and you give them a warning, another time they probably think about it, hopefully. Some will, but the...
There's a lot of clauses in there that, that would deter weaponization, as Eric put it. You know, something that would, a clause that would say that if somebody's constantly calling and using it to complain about their neighbor being too loud, like say more than three calls a night or something like that, they can get fined for abusing law.
Excessive, we could add something, we could do something like that, but it's not a problem.
That way it's a two-way street.
Anybody else? Motion to close?
Motion to close?
Second? Do you second? All favor? All favor. All right. Well, now we've got to decide what you wanted to, if we're going to vote for it, those who want to say, pass it. So, yeah, I vote. We need three votes, so. Here's yours.
Tending to, I'd like to before we pass it completely, I'd like to add, I mean, revisit a couple of the items like that myself.
We can do that.
I agree with you.
Anybody else?
I agree with that.
Okay, good.
So is there, so is the motion to table?
Motion to table, but until we had it in the course.
Motion to table.
All favor? All right? Okay. Okay. All right, public complaint. Anyone have a chance to have, you want to say something, please, just say your name and...
Maxine Lacher, 17 Howell Street. Usually I come here and I complain and tonight I just wanted to not complain and to tell you that I was very happy that the chief came and he went through our yard and he helped us figure out what we needed to do. And it worked out really well. And I thought that seeing as how I normally am complaining when I'm here, I would go the other direction.
Thank you.
So, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Yeah, just finish this little thing.
Back to traffic again. What's your chances of putting, I'd like to, Lacher, rather than, my time in there pulls three minutes and then traffic is backing up all the way across.
Well, I can talk to DOT, the state DOT about that. And...
What about your fire police? What about your fire police?
Well, I mean, what he's talking about, you've got to get permission from the DOT, the state DOT, to do something like that. And I can ask him, meanwhile, we can ask him.
Delaware Street, by the state or village?
State, the state road, the state road, the same thing. Now Stockton Avenue over Brady Street and going up 206, so state.
So Stockton is state?
Yep. Yes?
I just, it's a simple question. I passed by, the businesses are picking up in Walton, but who's responsible for keeping up where Dunkin' Donuts is going? It's really, you know, it's an eyesore when you come into town and you have businesses next to it. It just has been bothering me for a while and I just, I don't know, you know, like the fences blowing down.
I would tell Zach, our code guy, Zach, yeah. And, oh, there you are, I'm sorry. He has a note for, for them. All right, Zach, you can give them a call.
Okay. So it's up to them?
Zach's the code guy.
No.
They have to come down and do it, right?
Yeah, no, okay. I didn't know who was...
That's okay, no problem.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I just was questioning, I know, telling you about the water problem on Cherry and Bushfield, that area. And I know the other day, just for your information, that's kind of my house, it isn't exactly a flood day. This was just in the snowbowl. And it was up in my front lawn, my driveway. It was like, Dana's lawn, and it was on my, I just want to be sure if something is going to be done.
Something is going to be done. It's, our lawyers have been talking with Empire about it. Our lawyers gave a letter or suggestion about if we could go on their property, that we said that we would, it's their property, just to make sure we everybody understands that. And we said if you would let us on your property, we would put the pipe in from Cherry Street out to Fancher. We would dig it up, we would bury it, we would maintain it and take care of it. And anytime we had to go on property to maintain it, we would have permission, but it would always remain their property. I'm just waiting to get an answer on that. If that doesn't work out, then I've, I spoke to the Casco Watershed Corporation to see if maybe they can help us because it would be a much bigger project if we had to go down, down by Bushoff and Cherry and we have to pump down there and drive it up into there. So we're talking about a three quarters of a million dollar project for that. The other one might be, I don't know, $200,000. I mean, it's still a lot of money either way, but it is his property, it is, is Empire's property, so we'll, we have to get permission first. So hopefully that'll work out and then we'll go that way. But either way, we will do something. And until that happens, as you saw Friday, when any kind of water comes in, we will be down there with a pump, we'll pump it out, put the hoses in. I know it's, it's in inconvenience, but that's all we can do right now, but we will take care of it.
No, it does find out as far as pumping the water out. It works, but it's, when it's taxpayer expense is the way we look at it and it does damage the road open and it creates an unsafe position.
Right. Yes?
In terms of designated wetlands, a wetland can cross multiple property boundaries, but even if a person has a fraction of that wetland on their property, they're still obligated to conform to the overall wetland regulations. But it seems like that perhaps we, the owner could be prevailed upon to do more environmental use of his property that doesn't cause this damage to a portion of a designated wetland. There's a lot of money the village is spending. It doesn't have a lot of money.
You're absolutely right. Anybody else?
Talking about Cherry and Gill, that never gets resolved for us, is there any chance in the future, Cherry's a beautiful street, it's always been quiet over there with the business wind in, and our street, Gill Avenue, could the village ever put in some trees to block the business place over there in the residential?
We could, not on personal property, but I mean, we could, but I'm not going to speak for somebody else, but the corporation said that they were going to put a row of trees on that side of the road once they start doing their project. It's in their plan, they got to come before the planning board. And when they do, you can come up and see and they have pictures of everything.
Have they given an indication as to why nobody doing that?
No.
Did Jim, you're saying Jim has discussed putting trees?
Yep.
When? No one, Jim?
Huh?
No one, Jim, when?
I don't, I can't speak for the person. I only can say that I saw plans, on the plan, there were trees that were going down Cherry Street. That would, that would block some of the view of the trucks and things like that.
Would be a plus for Walton.
Yes, it would be.
Especially with the, if this new hospital takes place, if they have three floors, which we hear that they may, how much that would, I mean, for people that are in the hospital on those floors, how beautiful it would look to have that section with trees.
You're right.
So the village will publish when that...
Yes, it has to be published, yes. It has to be public and anybody can come for it.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Oh, Charles, I'm sorry.
Hi. Hi. Charles Bailey with Delaware Community's Housing Office. Delaware Community administers HUD-funded rental assistance program throughout all of Delaware County, which for very old reasons operates under the village of Walton. The PHA, or the Public Housing Authority, that HUD created in conjunction with the state in 1978, was the village of Walton. So every once in a while, we need the Village Walton Board to approve a change to the way that we are administering HUD's program. The change that we have made that brings me here tonight is we have updated our administrative plan that governs how that program is operated for the first time in many, many years, almost 10 years, I think, to make it compliant with current HUD regulations and to expand the services that we provide through the program. Most pointedly, the program previously did not have a home ownership pathway, which this admin plan creates for participants on that program, so that we create a way for people to move from rental assistance into home ownership.
That's good.
So it's 865 pages, it's exciting reading. I can either leave it for you to cure your insomnia one night or you can just approve it, whatever you deem appropriate, but we just need your approval to eventually put it into action.
Can I, may I ask a question? Is there something about your HUD housing, are there inspections that are done regularly on these, on these places that are rented?
Yes, ma'am. So each unit is inspected once per year. In fact, another one of the changes in this admin plan is that HUD, for a very long time, used a property standard called housing quality standards, or HQS. And HUD has gotten away from HQS and created a new property standard called Inspire, which stands for something. Don't ask me what it stands for, it's a HUD acronym, they love them. But it's to ensure that the properties are safe and sanitary effectively. So this plan also includes Inspire standards.
That's, that's good news.
I'm glad they're doing it for the houses too, because, I mean, remember Deb was talking about that for a long time, they've been doing it, but they find it's good. So you need us to give it a...
Yes, sir, that's correct. It's just called the Administrative Plan for the 541 Program. That's HUD's designation for this program. I'll make the motion to adjourn this one.
Definitely.
Do a second? All favor? Okay, all done. Thank you so much. Okay. Go through the abstracts. Everybody's had a chance to take a look at them. If you have no additions or changes, any of the motions approved?
Motion to approve the abstracts.
All favor? Okay. Apartment heads, Shane?
Good evening, everybody getting their report? Anything to have any questions? I don't have anything to ask for tonight, so.
That's a good thing. Great. Thanks for showing, yeah.
That was Matt.
That's quick.
Which one, one and all?
Code of the Water, Zach? Please.
So I sent out my monthly report. And overall, pretty slow in the office as far as safety permits come in. We only have nine, only three fire and safety inspections, five complaints and four yield searches. We did have a large number of over 100-plus sidewalks that needed to be taken care of because homeowners weren't doing their own due diligence.
Well, thank you.
And then, so another thing for this month is we have our CRS verification, it is ending on today. It's our time to put the information in. And Jessica Patterson over at Swallow Water, and I've been working together, and she's done a very heavy part of the workload on this, but we work together very hard to try to get us from a class seven to a class, or a class eight to a class seven. And what we found out is that the state has changed what they're doing as far as how they grade the municipalities. And a lot of municipalities actually went from a class eight back to a class nine. We, however, are for sure maintaining our class eight status and depending on how they grade the last portion of what we submitted, we could possibly be class seven. So what CRS is, is it's the Community Rating System. It's a voluntary program offered by FEMA that municipalities can take part in to reduce its communities' flood insurance costs. Through the education of landowners, maintenance of waterways, and preventive measures taken by the municipality, the village qualifies for a classification of 10 to 1. For every class the municipality qualifies for, it is a 5% discount. The village of Walton is currently at a class eight, which is a 10% discount. These numbers are just an example, but if you had 200 parcels, business or private in the village that are required to have flood insurance, and their yearly cost is $1,000 each per parcel. At a 10% discount out of $200,000, that would be an annual cumulative savings of $20,000 for the community as a whole. So if we can get another 5%, that'll be, that would be another $10,000.
Yeah, we're very close on that right now. They have changed some of the regulations. I think we're going to still make it, there'll be another 5%. So it'd be like 15% for those who have flood insurance. What we got approved tonight, a resolution, last time we did it was 2016, I believe it was. And it's for the Town and Village Public Information. Brooklyn, anyway, wants information about the flood, flood, flood program that we have to have your flood program. And the resolution is, the title is Program for Public Information, whereas the Village Board of Trustees of Walton, Village of Walton, the board recognizes that the potential or actual damages from flooding and erosion are a problem to the residents of the Village of Walton. And whereas the board finds that such damages may include destruction or loss of private or public housing, damage to public facilities, both publicly and privately owned, and to injury to or loss of human life. And whereas the board recognizes that information, informing, excuse me, informing the public of the risk before, during, and after the flood is a key protection of life and property. Whereas the board understands that the effective public outreach program is necessary to ensure that the risk communication reaches its intended audience. And therefore now is resolved that the Village of Walton hereby adopts a program for public information developed by the Walton Flood Commission in its capacity as joint committee for Town and Village of Walton as a primary tool for developing and instituting outreach projects to communicate the risks and mitigation strategies associated with flooding. So I just need a motion to adopt it, so we can give it to Jessica over at Swallow Water, so we can sort of our programs.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Close? Carrie, thank you. Thank you, Zach, I appreciate it. Public works, which?
Pretty quiet, other than all the snow and ice we've been having over this year. We're doing all right, though. Swallow's been a little sketchy getting, but we're all around.
Nobody has these tough weekends.
Yeah, and then the big mine are short, the trucking has been tough. As of right now, we're doing okay. I forgot, in the monthly report I put in there, one of the things I'd like to ask for, as we know, three of the EC units in the theater are not working. But we do have money in the line, hopefully we can actually replace one of them. This year, so they're trying to budget for next year. So I would like permission to do that, and the cost of that was $7,483. Sorry, budget? Sorry, what?
Make a motion?
Make a motion to.
Second. All favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
I did notice on your scale of snow away. See, I'm afraid of the very.
Yeah, it just hasn't been working. It scares the rain away coming in.
This apartment chief?
I received their report.
Yes, sir.
So I'd like to ask permission to hire block cleaning services to come to the station once we clean up this apartment. And then I would like to ask for Jessica to go to some trainings. One is basic juvenile police officer. That's in West Jefferson County, costs like $350. $350. And then.
What date is that, yeah?
That's going to be, I have it right here. It's March 10 through 14. And I would just kind of give her a little more knowledge, just dealing with, especially with schools. I know they have an S on their own, but you can get a lot of her fix outside of that.
That's always helpful. It's going to help them with their job.
Yep. And later that month, this month, there's also a drug interdiction and conducting a complete traffic stop. So just kind of, this basically like, when you do the traffic stop, kind of get you some ideas to get into the vehicle and whatnot. She's waiting for confirmation on that, so she may, you know, sort of that, but that one's free.
When is that going to be?
Sorry, thank you. That's the 24th and 25th. And then moving ahead to the end of April, there's a Crime Against Children seminar in Albany that's run by ECJS. That's also free. That's April 28th through May 2nd. That one's free.
How is any lodging or anything traveling?
I'm thinking she's going to go take a personal vehicle and go.
Okay. I think we need a motion.
Take a motion.
Okay. Second?
Yeah.
All favor?
Aye. Carrie.
So what about the cleaning?
The cleaning.
Yep. What is the cost on that, please?
I was just going to say that.
Yeah, $85. Second?
Second.
All favor?
Close?
Okay. Thank you, thank you. Level of engineering, Phil?
Hello. Nice to meet you. Got a couple of quick updates, nothing formal to ask for tonight. On the sewer side, EFC did a annual acceptance ceremony for the 4I study. Several months of that and forth, we're going to pay for that this past month. So we're looking to do the final draw up to get the village reimbursed for the second half of that grant. I think it's $15,000 that is due to the village from the EFC. On the water side of things, the capital project, the water means that that's been completed. There's a financial report going back and forth with the EFC, so that's wrapped up. So we're kind of transitioning to getting the well up and running, coordinating with the well driller to get their piece and coordinating that with the health department. And then the lead service line inventory, working with DPW to finalize the list of unknown services. And then we'll be looking to retain a contractor to go out and do the test digs to verify what type materials are. And that's what the grant that was awarded to the village will fund. That one doesn't have a local match. The other project that's underway is a great work at the Austin Milliken Pool. The village was awarded a grant from the state to go towards some repair work there. So that was initiated last month on the other board and were in design of DPW to help the plants and specs. Those have to be signed off by the health department. Once the health department signs off, we present them to the board and ask for permission to go to bid, hire a contractor to come in. The goal is to get a contractor lined up in the late springtime, so we can start work late summer, work through the fall as needed, and probably into the spring. But the goal would be to have the work done for the 2026.
26.
Swim season. Yeah, 26. So, that's where we're at. Do we need any additional authorizations from the mayor, the county mayor, the board per se to this project?
Yes, when we go to bid.
When we go to bid.
So to get a contractor on board, to put an ad in the paper, a public bid. When we get bids in, or if you want, once we select a contractor, that'll be presented to the board. We're going to hire, act and contracting, whatever happens to be is the most responsible bidder. And then they are exchange orders, you know, administering a construction contract, that'll be presented, so that as the project proceeds. There are some triggers with the grant as well, the activity, periodic updates and reporting to the Department of State as an administration.
Excuse me. Thank you.
Thanks.
Next, we need to set a public hearing for capital charges and rate changes. You got it. Jesse, anything?
Um, the, for me, the theater has a new alarm system in, and they're working on that, getting everything in order. And Jim Rice would like to be on the April meeting agenda. Also, he'll be back, so he would like to come to that next meeting. And the update with the ice rink, I'd like to thank Black Talis Holly back there for offering to have Black Talis and a group from there take over that ice skating rink for this spring. She and the group will get the liner out and take care of everything. And then there'll be also, whether we need a new liner or what it is, but they'll be setting it up next fall. So there should be an ice rink up there next year.
We just had a couple, just a couple of questions for you.
Yeah, and the sign, I know that you can put a little, not a big one, but they, they were talking like this, you know, you can put on the fence.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Need a key.
Yep, and the, yes, I have keys, yep.
And can we store the liner on site, or do we have to store that offsite?
I will check with Brian and see what they did.
Either way, it's fine.
Okay.
I think we put it in there.
I'm not sure. We'll have to check, do you know which?
We used to store it offsite, I actually think we used to store it up to Red Rest.
Red Rest, I think, you know, yes.
Because I don't think it'll fit in that shit.
Not with all the other stuff that they need. So, but thank you again, Holly and Black Talis.
That's the Lombe, Red Rest, you know that, right?
Yeah, I'll talk to them soon. I'm sure we can find a spot, but we'll figure it out.
Well, March came quick, six years went fast. So I just wanted to give some acknowledgements and words. What an honor it's been to serve my community, where I'm born and raised, worked with several of you over the years. Just what an honor it is to serve, and what a responsibility it is to serve. So my best wishes to the next board, whatever composition that will be. And just to remind folks that these positions are about, they are not about status or power, they're about service, service to others, but most importantly, service to the community. So thank you for the opportunity to serve. And looking forward to completing this term and serving in different capacity down the road.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. They have spent a lot, a lot of help. Last couple of years, the county mayor, I gave him a lot of extra stuff to do, so I appreciate it. He did it all professionally, very good.
Now he's going into position, he's going to give us help also.
Hopefully, yes. With them together. You have anything?
Good luck here.
Steve?
Just to, just to bring up a few things for the budget, to get that summed up for the.
There'll be something to talk about a little bit.
Yeah.
But something to bring up right now, matter of fact. Under management, we need to do a budget hearing, so we can normalize our budget. I would suggest the week, week of May, of March 23rd, 25th to 29th. Any of those days good for everybody, anybody?
It'll be Tuesday, 23rd.
The last week of the month, 20, I'm sorry, 24th to 25th.
Monday, the 24th?
Huh?
Monday, the 24th works good.
Monday, the 24th is good for you?
What time?
Six o'clock?
Six.
Eric, can you go for that? Okay, so we'll make a motion.
Make a motion to do a budget hearing on March 24th, that's 6:00 PM.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Close?
Is there a copy of the preliminary budget available for the public before the hearing?
There will be, yes.
Yes, there will be. We don't have one up yet, but we will.
Can I ask a question? Is it possible to do that hearing before the election, rather than after?
Yeah, we are doing it before the election.
When is it?
Oh, the 18th, oh, no, no. We got, there's a lot more, there's still a lot more talking to go with the police. So they're not going to meet until?
13th.
The 13th. Who knows, if that's going to go, they may have another one.
Okay.
We have to give enough time so that we can do the right thing. Yeah. Okay. Phil, would you like your resolution?
I think it would be number eight? Eight.
Oh, the capital charge here, probably going to be a capital charge.
They're just meeting on.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Phil. Guilty. Yeah, we need to set a public hearing for the capital charges and rate changes.
Yeah, or you can do it in April, or you can do it with the.
We can do it tonight, we do the budget.
Yeah, it's up to you.
Want to do it that night, do we have the budget hearing?
Yeah.
Need a motion then. Capital charge.
Motion to have the capital charges, rate changes, public hearing, Monday, March 24th, 6:00 PM.
Are those available for the public to review also? Yep.
Yes.
Thank you.
All favor?
Aye, aye, close?
We can do that.
Now I go to the collection resolution, sorry.
Hey, the board needs to pass a resolution, I have to put in the newspaper that the election is March 18th, from noon to 9:00 PM. That Ed Snow is running for mayor, Eddie Torres is running for mayor, Bjorn Ellardson is running for mayor, trustee Beth O'Brien is running, and Eric Northrup is running, and Justice Chad Hall is running. So I have to put those names and their addresses in. So I need that motion for that.
Some motion to post a public notice of the election. Yeah. I make a motion to post a public notice of the March 18th village elections.
All favor?
Aye.
Close?
Carrie.
Okay, number 10.